Northern Park and I stopped like oh, probably five miles from me.
What do you mean Northern Park? I mean in the county? Oh, I thought they were supposed to call it Northern Park.
There's a park, park, I forget, I forget where it cuts off. We started out with AT and C and then they sold out and then somebody else bought it. I forget any of that now, but every time they sold out our, our pricing, phone service.
Oh, of course.
Went up and the quality make the half.
Yeah, true. Yep, that's what it is. I don't know if it's.
Well, you, you, well, I have a good friend on, he's actually from Cambodia. And Cambodia, a phone over there costs five dollars a month and they get five to services. He comes back here and he says, we're like a third world country. But the only, he says this, well, bad thing about Cambodia is that there's different carriers.
Okay, let's get started. Please join me in the voiceover.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under a individual, with liberty, justice, and the world.
Mr. Harris.
Good morning. I was losing to really report. Thankfully I asked to be removed from the agenda and I accidentally got on there somehow, which is okay. We're finishing up the riverfront parking area today. After that, the commission has decided what other road work we want. This is me, my last meeting as the public works director. I want to thank everyone for putting up with me the last few years. I feel like we've accomplished a lot, a lot more to do, but thank you. That's all I have to say.
Well, Jim, I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, welcome.
It has been encouraging whenever there have been issues to flip them over the fence and have the assurance that they would be tended to.
Well, our goal is always to serve the public. Our customer service is driven that way and I think we, our people have done a good job.
And I admire the fact that many of the employees have longevity in your, in your group. Some even 30-year employees.
Yeah, well, another prime example that we've all heard and we've all read, surround yourself with good people and you'll be successful. That's what I did. I surrounded myself with good people, so I give them all the credit. So, thank you.
You and I have worked together for six years. And I know within those six years, there was a lot of challenges that we faced. All the way from, from processes to training to equipment. And we tackled every one of them and one of the things that really stood out to me was the way that we handled customer complaints. I know when I first was in this position that we had quite a few complaints. And we changed the process on when people called. We tried our best to handle those calls immediately. Done a great job over the years. We're going to miss you.
Well, thank you. I'm going to miss you guys too. You know, we've always operated under the theory if we react to our county citizens' requests, we don't get behind that way. So, it's worked very well and I hope it continues to do so. We've got a great group of guys. Whoever you choose to put there, those guys will support you. I've already talked to about it. They're all going to, they're going to do well.
So, um, yeah, we might call them complaints, but I think in the last, last four years, we call it, called them customer service requests, pretty much.
We have, yeah. It's worked very well, so. That's all I have.
Well, thank you.
I don't think I have anything except for I know that we had discussion. One of the, one of the suggestions I, I had was once we got the, the park down here done, that we could possibly go over and take a look at 125th. Because there's places on that road that really need some, some attention.
We did some patching there yesterday. We had like 15 tons of asphalt left. When you did a part of the patching, I've requested a mud report as well as a cash balance report from Patty. So, I would encourage the commission to look at that.
Yeah, I'm waiting on that also.
We're doing this, the third 100,000 dollar transfer today on the South Side of the road bridge. But there's still be one more, but I'd recommend that, that November should be, the funds should be there.
Well, you know, one, one of the things that we looked at was, was that we had to watch it fairly closely because we had an $80,000 payment for finishing the payoff of that paver. Uh, plus we had to, we had to watch our money on the shortfall we had in that fund last year.
Lucky for us, the shortfall during the COVID wasn't very bad. It didn't hurt too bad.
No.
Then what's helping us too is oil prices are down, so.
Yes, so I.
You should have a little money there.
I think we're in a good position.
So, last year we did 17 lane miles of asphalt overlays. Can you give us an idea of where we're at this year and?
Oh, I'll just give you a rough number here. Eight to 10, but you know, some of those bits, two layers and we fought chip problems all year.
So.
What impacted us this year was how aggressive we've got with that patcher. That patcher, when you use approximately 15 to 20 tons a day, patching hose, that's robbing from the chip pile make asphalt. So, we've really felt that impact this year, so really got to evaluate next year going forward, putting that program both up together, so.
So, in my district, the roads that were completed was Indian?
Indian.
Anything else?
Short road in front of the airport.
Yes, that's two miles.
Uh, most of us in his area. Uh, Atlanta Hill Road, talk back on 235.
Seven mile, that's about two miles too, right?
We did in front of K O A and we did a little bit on 215.
So, that's about four. Would we done anything else?
No.
Are there plans to do, so that's, you know, Clifton in my district. You have any plans to do anything in Lynn's?
If there are money left, we've talked about maybe chipping on 125th. And that would be a candidate that's a lot of areas that are a chip seal. But we'll have to be careful because we'll get into late in the year, you know, K DOD recommends not doing it this time of year. So, we won't produce ourselves if we don't like it. But if there's money there, you, you could have a lot of 10 inch overlay, 1 inch and a half, get you a good leveling course for next year. And I think some money will be there, but we just got to care about Patty.
Well, we have to, like I say, we have to be careful and again, the ones in sales taxes coming up on the ballot. Uh, that money will be collected, I think, until April of next year. If it doesn't pass, then we will not, our, our plans will change dramatically.
It will.
So, Jim, there's been some recent oil installation on Arrowhead Road.
Yes. Mr. Webb owns the place.
Okay.
Webb will send the bill for that. That is $400 wedding coming up October or something. If he wanted to. Just like any.
So, that's dust control?
Dust control.
Okay. I didn't know if that was a paving project or not.
It's dust control. We've done it several locations throughout the county.
Now, sometimes you use salt for that, right? Or sodium chloride?
We never have. You can, it's very expensive. Calcium chloride.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's a lot more labor intensive to use.
And you have to pack it with a roller or something?
Well, you have to rough the road up and then do it like drag with a scarf iron and spread.
So, what is, so this is oil? Is it like used oil or is it?
MC30. It's what we use for primer oil on any gravel road before we overlay that.
Okay, okay.
It's a primer. It's a primer in that place. Again, we've used it. We've done several locations this year, dust control, request the property owners.
Something we go through every year.
Yeah, after many, many years, 30 years.
And you know, and this year is, especially this time of year, it's been really dusty.
Yeah, very dusty. And the good thing about that location down there, that gentleman just finished a million dollar lodge. And across the roads across the county, we're pretty thankful for what he's done down there for our tax route.
Yes.
Do, do they pay co, uh, how does that work again? Sorry, or do you guys?
No, no, that's good.
Do they pay cost? Do they pay?
Dollar foot.
I'm sorry?
Dollar running foot. Everybody pays the same price.
Same, yeah.
Minimum 200 feet.
Okay.
And what's the cost of a?
It's probably a dollar. I mean, we're not making any money on this.
Yeah.
But it's a service to the public, good dust control.
Yeah.
And of course, they're on the south side of roads.
And how long does that last? Will it last a year?
Two years.
Last year, maybe second year, depends on the potty.
I know, I know it's been done by me.
Starts showing up and you can't blade it.
You can't blade it?
Can't blade it.
Yeah, okay.
The ones I've seen last anywhere from two, three years.
It's good for one year anyway. Second year, you might find getting a tad intense.
I think it's the third, third year going on by me and it's, it's indeed again.
We have a large wedding down there, so. Just Mr. Webb, home block, it's a daughter. Big deal. Everybody's a big deal, of course. Right, ladies? Cover that up there.
Well, I did get, I did get a compliment I wanted to pass on to the gentleman that, that is the greater operator in our area. I've received three very favorable comments on, on his work.
I'll share that with him. Our moderator guys were kind of where we need to be overall. Still some room for improvement, but we're getting there. A couple of them still new, year better. Overall doing well. There's a ten, the problem, of course, hopefully I can help in January, we'll have to really rethink our patching or asphalt or interlocal with the city with agreements or chips. But I've met some ideas how we can make more chips.
Right.
So, whoever you guys pick, I'll share that.
Then again, then again, it's. Then again, this really kind of emphasizes the importance of, of this one cent sales tax passing. Because it's an opportunity before the city and the county on a, on a interlocal agreement. And overall, it will, will be good for the taxpayers because it will reduce their cost. Uh, they're buying all their product from a, a commercial quarry, which is probably about twice or more than what we're able to supply. And legally, we could, we could have interlocal agreement, which will cut that cost down dramatically.
All we can do different next year is, I'd recommend to the person, that's up to them, of course, is to not use our producer screen on a startup. Change your screen and use the larger spider screen just to make chips, which will hurt your base rock, which you can catch up on your base rock, but, and recycle the oversides back in. I think we can produce more chips wherever it's on the thing. It's going to be worth a try. I've met with the, uh, people with made machine about a month ago. They think it'd work.
Okay.
That's it. I just love your ass. I can't breathe anyway.
Hey, you're a little bit better because you got a little more room. Yeah, Will's got some over there. So, quickly, did you all commissioners get this notification from Kathy Cooper?
Yes, judicial.
For the 12, 12:30 PM Zoom meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
Evidently she's the second one I've got, gotten and evidently that, that's saying it's important.
So, do we want to participate in that meeting here?
I don't know. I don't think I'm going to be able to. I will participate, but I think I'll be on the run.
Okay.
Is?
That way I can be in and out.
So, it says for tomorrow, is that?
September 29th.
Subject, is your meeting September 29th?
And it is for, no, it was earlier.
Okay.
All righty. So.
Is she in probation services, can I? How is that sixth judicial district tied to the services that Kathy provides tied to our court system?
They're all, they're all intertwined. They, the sixth judicial district probation offices services Lynn County, Miami County, Bourbon, so they handle all the probation cases. Juvenile, adult. Parole's different, but still same sixth judicial district.
I never got the link.
What's that?
It says that she sent a link. I didn't get a link.
I know it's, uh, this pandemic has really changed their operation. And we leased in space, Kathy Cooper.
I'm sorry?
Say Kathy Cooper, we were leased in space in our building across the street.
Oh, gotcha. Gotcha.
Okay, I see, uh, the invitation was sent from Amy Willard?
Mm-hmm.
On September 28th at two?
Amy what?
Amy Willard.
W I L L A R D?
Yes.
I have to have one of you guys forward it to me or something?
What is?
Or have, I can have Kendall reforward it to me. It's 9:15. I make the motion for executive session for 10 minutes.
Talk about non-elected personnel?
Non-elected personnel, sorry.
I second that.
Who you want in, please?
Uh, it's three's fine.
You want Kendall in?
Uh, she's fine, yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mic talk.
Hi, Jim.
So I move that we proceed with making an offer to one of our four candidates for the Public Works Supervisor position.
A second.
Furthermore, move that I be granted permission from the Commission to have those conversations.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Alrighty. So, is Jody here today?
She was on the radio this morning.
What's her name? She went in, that's what it is, Greenbush? I don't remember her name.
Monica?
Monica, yes.
She's, she went in there. And so, to clarify, what position are you just offering?
To replace Jim's position.
Public Works?
Public Works Director. Hi Monica!
Hello?
Hey Monica.
Where do you want me? I like being in digs.
They'll be fine if you want to. We've got your PC and everything.
Yeah, I don't need much. Hi, I'm Monica.
Monica Clifton, hi.
Hi Clifton, nice to meet you.
Clifton is our new supervisor for...
Congratulations. Well, great, well...
To replace Mr. Ruhl.
I'll have to tell you that.
Good deal, good deal. Hello?
How are you doing?
I'm glad you're on quarantine.
Thank you, sir.
It was actually a delightful quarantine, by the way.
I'm, I'm hoping it's quarantine.
Hey, Leslie, can I have that copy that I gave you? I only need more copies, but I guess not many. Thank you. I'll give you the signed copy again, and I'll give you copies of all this. Thank you.
So Monica, I guess you probably already have all the, the applications that I assigned.
They're flying through, they're flying through, so...
I don't think I have any more right now.
Though, as, you'll see them as they come. So, good morning, everybody. Quick update on where we are with the, with the Bourbon County Spark Fund?
I had one, I had one this morning.
Okay, good. So, I just have a quick update for you. Good news. Finally heard back, finally got all questions answered, and you are in good shape and good to go. So, what, I'm going to tell you just a few things. All parts of your plan have been approved by the state. So, the list that you approved previously is the same list. There were no changes. There were questions that were able to be answered, and applicants were very forthcoming with clarifying some questions, and the State Office of Recovery approved the plan. The plan still, as we have talked about from the very beginning, is your responsibility, and in the end, the Commission is the one who is responsible for all actions of the plan. What the Office of Recovery was able to do was to show that at this point in time, based on the information that we have from the federal government, the expenditures are considered allowable. So, that's what we know. The reality is also that in two, or three, or four years, if there is an audit by the Office of the Inspector General, it will come to you folks. So, we will continue to work to gather all the documentation of what we know right now, so that in three or four years, when you have a new project going on, you'll say, "Ah, I remember we did it that way." And that will be part of the service that Greenbush provides to you as a Commission. We also had a nice meeting with the technical assistance provider from the Office of Recovery, and went through some very specific things to ensure that our understanding was accurate based on this moment in time. And one thing that we are going to make sure that we do for you is the way that we provide you the information back is intended, will be intended to meet the specifications that we heard this week, which were essentially, for everybody that you're paying through this process right now, you'll have a folder that says, "Blank Organization," you'll have their application, you'll have the memorandum of understanding, you'll have their W-9, and you'll have their payment history. So hopefully, if none of us are here, if that ever happens, it'll be easy for the next Commission to handle. The other thing to report is that the spreadsheet for reporting has changed again, and tomorrow, we are all attending a technical assistance meeting to make sure that we understand how that reporting works. So, as a quick reminder, we at Greenbush will be filling out a lot of those reporting documents to do a process called reconciling. And so, at the very beginning of this timeline, we talked about reconciling opportunities in the months of October, November, and December. We will gather that information, in many cases, from the recipients. So, for example, there's a form, and we will send the form to Fort Scott Community College, as an example. They will fill it in, we compile it, and then we send it all up. Okay? So, that's the form that has, is actually been adapted, that we will learn more about tomorrow, and then we will share that with the appropriate applicants to help us complete. That reconciling is what we will do with Jody, because it goes into the big portal where everything else has gone. Because of that change, we had a bit of an extension in our process that we have been following regarding the memorandums of understanding. So, backing up and starting again, we had, of course, the application process, and in that application process, there was an attestation to everything being true and accurate. So, we had that piece. And then the second piece to help protect you was an organized memorandum of understanding. Just FYI, Jody and I are on a listserv, and there are some counties that are just now, this month, saying, "Shouldn't we have a memorandum of understanding?" And, and they're saying things like, "Well, I don't know, what do you think? And what do you think?" So, you guys are ahead of the, ahead of the curve on that. The memorandums of understanding were issued via DocuSign, which is a piece of software that we have at Greenbush, and were sent to all of the applicants that were previously approved. Those memorandum of understanding had multiple parts in them, and so that at any point in time, this is the chance for the applicant to say, "Yep, that's right, we agreed on this, we're all good to go," or to say, "Gosh, no thank you." Or, in some cases, folks have called and said, "You have this particular expense in this category, we thought it was this one, could we just double check on that?" So, overall, people, applicants, have been very, very thoughtful and conscientious, and want to make sure they understand. We have fielded a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails, and honestly, most of them are folks saying, "Thank you," and saying, "I just want to make sure I do this right." And so, that's, that's good news. We have not fielded a lot of, a lot of issues or problems. And I think mostly that's because you guys have been so open throughout this process and talked about it so openly. Many counties have not. So, where we are in the process right now, the DocuSign process, as a quick reminder, starts with us, goes to the applicant, moves on to Lynn, as your approved signature. Both parties get a completed notice, and can also download the MOU. If they are small business, not, and all include a W-9. We are, that's a pill of a thing to gather, it's a pill. But again, we're trying to protect Kendall's group and making sure we don't have a W-9 from 1999 on file from somebody. So, now, where the process is, is everybody has those. People are calling back and forth, and we're getting all the, the nuts and bolts. We have a shared spreadsheet with Kendall's office that we have organized in a way that we can communicate with each other and say, "This one's ready to pay, this one's not ready to pay." And on their end, they will mark in the same shared spreadsheet, "Paid on such and such a date, check number such and such," which is what we will need for the reconciling process. So, we're doing that through a protected shared drive, so we're not, you know, sharing any information we shouldn't be, and those will start folding in here pretty soon. So, you will start seeing applicants that are ready to pay. So, that should be happening within the next couple of days. First reconciliation will occur in several weeks. There was a pushback of a lot of the original deadlines because, look, somebody from Fort Scott's calling me. What do you know? I've been getting a lot of friends from Fort Scott lately. One of the things that, the reconciliation, when it occurs, a quick reminder, this is the chance for you guys to say, "Where are we? We got this much money, we've spent this much." And then, as we get closer to December, I may come back to you and say, "Okay, friends, so-and-so bowed out, you've got an extra $2,000. Where do you want to use it?" You also may have the situation where somebody says, "We thought our project was going to cost $80,000, and it costs 60." And then you will need to make those decisions about, well, do we want to take that 20, fund somebody else, or see if they want to expand on their project? So, look for that to be coming. Hopefully, I will not be coming to you and saying you're short. Shouldn't be coming to you and saying you're short. But we could come to you and, you know, and it could be a situation where an applicant says, "We thought it was going to cost us 80, and it cost us 100. We don't know if we should move forward." So, I'm just trying to prepare you for all potential scenarios.
So, real quick on that note, question I would have is, so, a business goes out and gets a estimate on the cost of a project?
Yeah.
So, the estimate wasn't quite correct, and maybe a couple $3,000 more? So, if you look at the, if you look at what the, the grant was awarded, it's probably less than what was requested. So, do they have the latitude to go ahead and finish that project with a higher expense as long as it still fits within the category?
And it'd be on their part, those additional expenses?
Beyond, yeah, beyond, beyond the businesses.
Yeah. So, I would answer, just offhand, yes, to that, that that's, you know, there, there is an assumption that there's a, there is an applicant portion, right? There's an assumption of that. What I hope we're going to be able to do, Lynn, in that situation, is because we are communicating with applicants in such a way, saying, "Contact us, contact us, contact us," as those weird things come up, we'll be able to say, "Okay, based on our best judgment today, that looks like that, that meets the intent of the money." Because remember, everything here comes back to mitigating the negative impact of COVID-19.
Correct.
If I, I think that's probably going to be on my gravestone, mitigating the impact of COVID, negative impact of COVID-19. And, and I think, too, we now know some more key phrases to look and judge by. So, this technical assistance team has been able to ask us questions, Jeff heard these questions the other day on a call, of, you know, just the way they phrase it, you know, cost-effective, you know, those kinds of things. They've got some more.
I'll give you an example.
Yes, please.
Fort Scott Community College utilized some funds to purchase vans for transportation, for distancing. The question that they have is, did they consider leasing? Which is more directly to the...
Timeframe.
Uh, timeframe of the, you know, so, and, and I think then, the community college came up with a, a formal response to that question.
Yes. Because they're, they were looking at everything in the context of March to December, because federally, that's what they're required to do. And they're asking us that question, and why would you buy, you know, that kind of thing? But the community college was able to show that this was better than leasing financially. Fair question, right? Very fair question, based on the source of the funds. So, I think overall, that's where, that's where we are. Good news is, you were able to fund most folks. To your point, Lynn, many folks did not get what they asked for, right? But you had your priority buckets, and, and you spread it out. So, I think, overall, we're moving fine. Of course, if you hear something different, please contact me, and I'll try to see what's happening. But at this point in time, that's my report, unless you have questions for me, and then Jody's going to share specifics on a piece of the project.
Before we get into that, I think it would probably behoove us to go into an executive session, to discuss, let me get my wording down right.
You know, you could have it on your gravestone, too. Whatever phrase you like.
Well, I'll put it in my eulogy, at least.
Yeah.
Okay, it will be... It's confidential data relating to financial affairs and trade secrets of corporation partnerships and individual proprietorships, for 15 minutes. Here, a second. Huh?
Who, who are you wanting?
Well, it'd be the three commissioners, you and Monica.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we leave him?
Uh, yes.
Oh, we got the video on, huh? Is the attorney actually going to go in? He should leave though.
We're gonna drink probably.
Hop along, Cassidy.
All in favor, aye.
Yeah.
So that's Yeah.
Says she just started, already found one of it. Messed up, so that's another big decision. What, 200 miles of gravel road? Take away the fun, your pothole filling and your ice removal. Good game on, Simon.
Yes, it was.
I watched it till half. My little man had a cold, but he can, so I didn't get to stay up, but.
I enjoyed it.
Heard it was a good, good second half. Got your winner at the Starburst.
Tomorrow morning, I'm gonna be a full-time fishing guy for a while.
Full-time what?
Tomorrow morning, I'm gonna be a full-time fishing guy for a while.
Yeah.
It's impossible.
Well, I guess you can enjoy it from home.
Oh, yeah. Yep, I will.
Yep.
But I did ask you.
Little mountains, Scott.
No, I don't.
First, the members.
Because it is
Well, what do you think we ought to start? Putting out some, doing some rallying on that tax.
Well, yeah, we had a big market going this morning and some of the people divided to show up. But a couple of days ago, I had a meeting with, actually last Thursday, Lindsey and Joe, they had, and it went very well. So he's gonna be on the next two, the city commissioner. Try to get some things up forward and make a buck's value support this month.
Booker was off and
I mean, they plus.
She has defense, it's going worse soon.
And after that, they look
They're much more sensitive.
And we got a running game.
Yeah, that was I think that's Imagine it too. There's still a lot of A lot of visitors About the Seaver Land guy, but, you know, it's shocking to the running back. They should have They don't wait, they basically serve free Six rounds or
Well, where'd they get that? The guy that replaced, because I think you replaced
Yeah. One guy they got
Pretty interesting. Pretty interesting, that's for sure. Susan's perfect guy.
Susan changed
Fill that whole wide way, go through a recruiting process.
Everybody want to?
I look like you're full.
Well, we have, we have 59 rooms. And we have 60 parking spaces. So every empty parking space is an empty room. So I don't get really excited when I come to work until that North lot on Wall Street's full. And that's all, I know, hey, it was a good night.
Yeah, everything.
But yeah, we've been, no, we weren't really good numbers, considering
Yeah.
Considering state of travel. You have a lack, lack of the travel industry right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think through Florida.
Yeah, all those tour brands and all those tourism Does that issue just
Yeah, I know that, um, Rika Springs, like a third of the stores are closed.
Yeah.
And I mean, they used to have maybe one or two shops, but a good friend said that every other, every third shop Are gone.
Yeah, seasonal business, you miss a whole season.
Right, and at this point, they're They're getting close to two now. Because their spring is big, their fall is huge.
Right, right.
Uh, it's an option.
I might go ahead and let anybody who wants to come up and get one of these packets, I pass them out to you, but I'm kind of hobbling around myself.
On, you got to, uh, sure?
All right, are we ready?
Not yet. I think maybe I want just one more real quick, um, executive session. Two minutes for most, for the same, same deal. I don't need Monica there, three commissioners, Jody. This is very quick.
Was that a motion?
With the motion.
I second it.
Any discretion? All in favor? Aye.
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 So what do this is about the grocery store and that? Is that what you're saying, Lynn?
Just the whole thing, actually.
Is everybody able to get a packet that works well? Do you have a packet?
Okay, Monica's doing a little research. So I'm gonna take another five minutes, that's the session for the second time. Uh, just free commissioners.
I second that.
Any discussion? On favor. Aye.
Okay. Julie just got cut off. Do you remember what it?
It's online, yeah.
This is a third one. Do you remember what that was? Online where?
No, there's several of them. That was just, that's intentionally built that way.
Oh, no, it's just, okay.
Yeah.
Do you really know? But I was, I've been in Richard Block several times trying to ask about their meat and, and of course the little man behind the counter. Like and says, well, it's sourced from Kansas City. But it's all, did he not have any other information on that? Like, he just couldn't seem to tell me. What I was hoping for was that he would say, oh, well, we get this from Swanson Ranch over here.
Yeah, that'd be good, wouldn't it? Yeah.
You know, I mean, I would like to buy as low, you know, knowing as well as possible.
Absolutely. Now, we don't have a very, we don't have right now a safe or to consumer model. Not part of this plan.
Oh, okay.
See the timeline?
I did.
That's really quirky.
Yeah, I kind of feel like it, but do we know, are these the same folks? That are doing the old grocery store in Iowa?
I.
Okay, because I know that was.
Mildred, I think.
Mildred?
I think, isn't that what?
Maybe it's Mildred, not Iowa.
Iowa actually coughed money if the G N W.
Well, it should do.
When they pulled that new grocery store, Iowa actually coughed money.
But they're kind of like us when it comes to grocery stores. They need.
They didn't have anything at Walmart.
They just have Walmart.
How's that?
That's a nice new store. I've been in it several times.
Well, it really makes sense.
It's too bad, but.
You know, turtles was looking for you.
I don't know. Yeah, I do know that. I brought that up once last week, I think.
I seen Iowa.
I brought this back up.
Yeah. Somebody shared it with me on Facebook, so. Yeah.
My thing is those little stores, like, they're just so hot.
They really are. Even. It's, it's hard, yeah. When I go over to G N W because I wanna, and then I look at the Swanson Ranch and I know what the price of the ranch is at Walmart. Okay. I can't do this on every product. It really is. I, I feel for, small towns, small grocery stores.
It might be all right for.
Somebody needs to walk the block or two. But too impressive.
No, we have so many people that work, don't work here. You know, especially young ones, younger ones. Trying to delay their, even jobs, you know? So that's good there. Yeah, that's good there's gonna. But here after work, what do you need? I'm going to the grocery store.
I retired in two thousand. I worked for six years in Kansas City because that's the only place that paid me a lot of work.
Yeah.
And, I mean, true business.
Something? And they're good too. I got your song.
Hey, Judy, you're up.
Give her a few extra minutes.
You should have beat this or something. We could have gone it. Yeah, start.
Go in. I got your answer. You want it?
Oh, I like, I like the answer. So how long are you in the booth?
And, well, I go back to Greg next Tuesday, so hopefully I'll have some good news that's. It's, the swelling is really bad and I think he saw a couple of things in there, so we'll just have to wait and see. Did you get a haircut, Jeff?
I haven't.
Well, it looks like, maybe you just brushed it out today.
I rode my motorcycle to work.
Okay.
Thanks, Monica.
I'll let you know when I hear the answer.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna get out of the way here.
You have a four or two?
Okay, great, thank you, Lynn. I'm gonna talk to, about the specific downtown grocery store and business resource project specifically. Um, we've, we've given it extra time and extra scrutiny just because of the nature of the project and, and it's a larger project than the others. Uh, we met with the state recovery office and with their consultants to ensure that we have done. Uh, we have crossed all of our Ts and dotted all of our Is for if and when this project or any of the. Uh, proposals are audited by the O I G over at the treasures office at the, in the federal government. So I want to take, just to give a brief outline of the program itself. I handed out a packet that kind of describes, yep, as an overview of what all this pro, project is encompassing. It is a multi collaboration and multipurpose project and that's explains a lot of why. The dollar amount is, is so big is because it's addressing so many needs in our community. We're partnering with the Pitt State Small Business Development Center, the Fort Scott Area Chamber of Commerce, the Fort Scott Community College. Kansas Works, which is a, um, a subset of the Network Kansas. We're partnering with private investor Baha Investments and, um, also partnering with the Small Projects Bureau who will be providing. Assistance to businesses to increase their online presence and to, uh, you know, to be able to offer their services online. We're going to be providing a location for distance learning and telework for those who aren't able to have access to adequate internet services. We're going to provide childcare center relief in, in fulfilling educational requirements. When we did the business retention and expansion survey last year, one of the things that was brought up then and, and has been exaggerated now with the COVID crisis. Is that the, um, the amount of revenue that childcarers are receiving continues to decline. And their costs, of course, continue to increase, just like any other business. But one of the issues that they have is for their workers to get their required educational credits. They are offered at times that are inconvenient and they are very expensive to the childcare centers to, um, to be able to afford to do that. So we're going to work with our childcare facilities and centers in offering those educational requirements to them and relieve that burden. We're also, we, uh, Kansas Works has a, um, has estimated that there's about fifteen illegal childcares in Bourbon County. And with our crisis right now and, and access to childcare, that's certainly something we would like to see become legal. So we're going to financially incentivize and give those classes to illegal childcare to become legal. Businesses will be given the technical assistance and tools to move to an online presence. And we're gonna be working with the Small Business Development Center to build models and to work on those applications. And to re, and to research the resources they need to be sustainable. So we're, um, building the capacity for those entrepreneurs and small businesses to seek the help and get the, get their needs met so that they can have a sustainable model. Kansas Works is also going to be available there two times a week to visit and help with unemployment and to help our community members on job seeking services. So increasing ca, access to healthy food and building our capacity for local, local fit, food assistance is certainly a major piece in this puzzle. But it's still just a piece in the larger scheme of things. Uh, Bourbon County food insecurity data shows that we are trend, we have, in two thousand eighteen, we were, we were fourth, ranked fourth worst in the state of Kansas. We're trending to be, um, become even worse on, on our, on our numbers. Uh, still ranking us as fourth worst, but those percentages across the board, of course, are going to be increased due to the COVID pandemic and the shortage of food supply. And, um, you know, unemployment and poverty certainly play a part in food insecurity, on access to food and being able to afford it and transportation and that kind of thing. We're excited that this is going to be, uh, an opportunity for, for the nexus. And that's our proximity to cattle and ranchers where our location is right now. So if we, as with our proximity to cattle and ranchers right now, uh, if we were able to take the animals as they're raised and, and arrives at a small scale. Processing facility and then direct to consumer, that cuts out quite a bit of the middlemen that have been involved in that situation. And helps with our supply chain on, on meat. Uh, we have worked with Ponderosa Farms too, to, uh, get access to locally produced food. They received a spark grant as well for farming equipment so that they builds up their capacity to have fresh foods and vegetables in, in the grocery store outlet. The store is located directly across the street from the new low income housing. There's about sixty new apartments there. There's a high rise around the corner and, um, and so far, uh, it has been. Pretty widely accepted across, uh, from, from what I have been able to read and see. The timeline is going to be very constrained. We have until December thirty-first to have the entire project complete. I completed a downtown, uh, project personally and Bill Michaud with Baha Investments has also completed a downtown building. We've got great track records of getting those projects complete within a timely fashion and I have no doubt that this will also be the case with this project. You can see on the packet though, that there is a pretty detailed timeline on there. The Business Resource Center will be the first to, to have complete. We're hoping to have that complete by mid to end of October. And then the construction on the second floor will start on October thirtieth and, uh, and from there. Bill, we've been in talk with C H C of Southeast Kansas to address, uh, those, some of those food insecurity issues on those who are homebound and not able to get out to get. Access to food and C H C is going to, they have a food delivery service, but they're in need of storage. So we will have that storage space in the basement with walk-in coolers and freezers for C H C to supply to local, um, community members throughout the county on a food delivery service. Another issue that we have with our resources is we have a really amazing, uh, food pantry over on the east side of town. Unfortunately, the geographic, uh, location and the hours of operation really constrain any working or even unemployed person from obtaining food. The hours are Monday through Friday, nine AM to one PM. So if, if a person is working, uh, eight hours a day, it's really impossible for them to get access to that locally, or access to the food pantry and, and those resources there. Part of the, the, um, uh, I did give you some of the data and documents that we will be, that will be included in the project file for Baha Investments for if. Or when, I like to say when, we're in, we are audited because rest assured, that's the best way to approach it is assuming that you will be audited. We have a letter of support from the Director of Bureau of Health Promotion identifying that we are in a food insecurity area and that COVID has exaggerated the issue. We have data from the Kansas Department of Labor showing the unemployment rate in twenty nineteen compared to what the unemployment rate is this year. And there's been a two point eight percent increase compared to August of last year. That really, um, paints a good picture of what our unemployment rate and food insecurity is, is here. Food insecurity is really a hard concept to understand. It's not just about being hungry. It's not just about having food on your plate. It's about having to choose between food on your table or getting the medicine that you need. It's about having food on your plate or paying the rent over your, over your head. And so anything that we can do to increase access, whether that's transportation by geographic location within a walking area or biking. Right now, people on this side of town, it takes some thirty minutes to get to G N W or fifty minutes to Walmart. And that's, um, that's not an equitable solution to food insecurity at this time. I'm gonna read to you, uh, some of the, we just, uh, we didn't make any major changes to the memorandum of understanding for Baha Investments for this project. But we did want to, because it is such a large project, outline the need because we will be audited. And we want to also outline what our objectives are with this and the outcomes, uh, that we, we expect and then the long-term outcomes. That come along with this four hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. Food insecurity has been defined by the Bureau of Health Promotion as the disruption of food intake or eating patterns because of lack of money or other resources. Food insecurity may be long-term or temporary. Factors that increase risk of food insecurity include income, employment, geographic location and lack of transportation. Whereas the Kansas Department of Health and Environment data show Bourbon County's food insecurity rate is fifteen nine point nine percent, ranking the county amongst the worst in the state. Whereas because of this rate, Bourbon County has been identified as an area of high need by the Bureau of Health Promotion. Whereas the August twenty twenty unemployment rate is seven point two percent with a two point eight percent increase over the year change according to the Kansas Department of Labor. Whereas according to Feeding America, the twenty twenty projected overall food insecurity rate has seen a five point two percent. And the twenty twenty child food insecurity rate is projected to reach eleven point four percent increase. Whereas Bourbon County is forecast to be ranked the fourth worst county in the state of Kansas in terms of overall food insecurity and child food insecurity in twenty twenty. Whereas the Bourbon County community has very limited resources to address such significant and urgent needs. Current community resources are limited in geography, hours of operation and in cold storage. Bourbon County citizens, whereas Bourbon County citizens have felt a shortage of food supplies due to COVID related pack, related packing plant closures. A system for selling direct to consumers not currently, does not currently exist for our local producers, farmers and ranchers. Whereas C H C S E K currently provides food delivery to Crawford County residents and is seeking suitable food storage and warehouse space to serve Bourbon County area. Whereas Kansas Works estimates there are approximately. Whereas, Kansas Works estimates there are approximately 15 unlicensed daycares within Bourbon County. Whereas, there are only two childcare centers countywide and each has submitted relief, applications for relief. Whereas, the community has felt the impact of at least nine businesses' closures from March 1st, 2020 through September 25th, 2020, from the services industry. Whereas, Bourbon County and the city of Fort Scott have seen over 30 local businesses from the services industry temporarily closed at one point in time since March 1st, 2020, for health and safety-related causes as a result of the coronavirus pandemic. The objectives of Bourbon County Commission's Economic Development Resilient Food Systems Grant are to: One, manage current and immediate conditions as a result of the COVID pandemic, March 1st through December 31st, 2020. Two, implement financially sustainable programs to address current food insecurity. Three, increase access to nutritious and safe food for all residents. Four, enhance economic activities and build resilient food systems related to local food production and consumption. Five, bring stakeholders together and provide mechanisms to address current needs that build capacity of local nonprofit food delivery systems and address a public purpose. Six, coordinate and collaborate with new and existing programs within the community and other county and state food policy organizations regionally. And last, support local producers, processors, and distributors of food products. To ensure effective and timely oversight of local spending, Baja Investments LLC will comply with reporting requirements established by Bourbon County and the state of Kansas. In addition, Baja Investments will comply with long-term outcomes or repayment of grant will be required in full. Through 2023, Baja Investments will provide CHC-SEK food delivery a reasonable amount of space for storage. Through 2023, Baja Investments will maintain hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, a minimum of 12 hours open, and Sundays, a minimum of eight hours open. Through 2023, a reasonable amount of space for locally-produced food will be available. Baja Investments agrees to not sell or transfer purchased assets or real estate acquired with Spark funding through 2023. Second-floor space of 5,500 square feet will remain available to B-Work collaboration for a significantly discounted pre-negotiated rate through December 30th, 2020. B-Work will given, will be given the right of first refusal to continue programming on the second floor to implement a pilot program for the Pitt State University Small Business Development Center or any other programs that arise to address a business or workforce need. A breakdown of the approved budget will be: Baja Investments, investment, $200,000. Acquisition costs, $62,500. CHC food distribution and storage, $67,000. Baja and Healthy Bourbon County Action Teams, local farm, ranch, food co-op, and grocery space, will be for $361,000. Bourbon County Workforce and Entrepreneurial Resource Center, $106,621. And that includes everything that I added to the MOU template that the commission has previously approved. I would ask that, that Baja Investments sign this or, and that the commission give our chair approval to sign.
I move that we give our chairman permission to sign this grant memorandum of understanding for direct aid.
Second.
Second.
Any discretion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bill, will you sign this and then Lynn can sign it? You need to sign this and then Lynn can sign it. Yeah, we'll need to have a couple signed.
Thanks, Monica.
Let me get yours and sign yours.
I know, I know that the discussion was long, but I can share one, that the questions that we have answered were answered.
Lynn will sign it, yeah. We just need to, I think that'll be good.
Thanks, Cliff.
Thank you. I have one more thing that I need to, I need to ask if you guys can get it over here.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, you have anything for me?
No.
Okay, I'm going to go meet with your clerk's office and ensure that the MOUs continue to process quickly so we can get folks their money.
All right.
Okay, thank you all.
Thanks, Monica.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so the next thing that I have on the agenda is the MOU extension for the Blue Cross Blue Shield. We were giving a no-cost MOU extension. We have about $8,000 or so left out of our Phase 1 funds. They have been earmarked by the committee to use for our wholesale food directory. So we've been working with a designer on it. Funds have to be spent by December, by December 31st of this year. And there'll be some additional reporting requirements that, I track the spending on a ledger I have for four years, because I've had to report it for four years. So there won't be anything new with this. It's just, it'll give us a chance, because of COVID, we weren't able to do the event like we had originally budgeted for. So this gives us a chance to spend the money in the community.
So you say that is going to be on updating your wholesale food directory?
Yeah, we have the money earmarked to do our second edition of the wholesale food directory. We did a first edition in 2018, and it really bridged the gap between those who produce locally-produced food and those who want to buy it. So the restaurants, as a result of our initiative, we have nine restaurants and food retail who now promote locally-produced food in their initiative, in their establishments, whereas before there were zero.
So I was at a, kind of a learning conference where they featured this directory in support of the school boards in Topeka buying locally-produced foods for their school system. And they really identified the need of such a directory in their location.
Yeah.
But it was kind of interesting to see some people around the state are noticing the work that has been done here locally and...
It has been a very successful program.
Yeah, we have had some really tangible outcomes that we are very proud of in the last four years. We have them listed on the website, on the Bourbon County website, under Healthy Bourbon County Action Team, if anybody wants to go look at that big, old, long list of outcomes that we have, so.
Yep.
Yep. So I would just ask that you guys sign the memorandum of understanding for the extension.
I move that we allow the chairman the authority to sign this third amendment to the memorandum of agreement between Bourbon County and Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Any discretion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Question carries.
Thank you, you guys. All right. I'm going to get to my 10 o'clock meeting. I don't know why I thought that that would have been over in a half an hour.
Well, the half hour is my fault.
You ready for Ian?
Who has the signed documents?
I have them.
Here, Julia.
All right, thank you. If you want, I had them signed, too, so you could have an original.
I don't want to go on with these notes, because those cost way too much to turn off. My purpose is, my name is Ann Dare. My purpose in speaking to you today is to let you know of core requests I have sent to state agencies and inconsistencies told to us by Apex and hoping that the commission would find a way to slow down, if not halt, wind development in our county. Statements have been made to the effect that the state regulates wind energy companies. In an email received on February 19th, 2020, from the KCC, it states, "This is not a regulated entity and that we do not have any information to share. Kansas Statutes Chapter 66 explains which utilities are regulated and which are not. As I, Steve Boyd, read 66-104E, it appears as though wind farms would be out of our jurisdiction, but I suspect the county planning commission would have the right to zone property of this type of business," end quote. In a follow-up email, September 2nd, 2020, quote, "The KCC does not regulate wind farms, therefore there are no records to provide," end quote. I received four responses from the KDHE. Bureau of Air, Water, Environmental Field Services, Environmental Remediation, all state they have no record of being contacted by Apex. In a letter between the KDWPT and Apex, I also learned that there are, quote, "20 state-listed species within 10 miles of the project that are in need of conservation," end quote. Apex will need to maintain current native grasslands, as these grasslands are the very habitat that these species live in. KDWPT also recommends that turbines not be placed within three miles of Hollister Wildlife Area. Words like guidelines, strategy, recommendation are used throughout the letter. Again, KDWPT cannot regulate wind companies. They can only hope that the wind company will work with them for the best outcomes in order to maintain the species of flora and fauna that we have in Bourbon County. I also spoke to Jason Lugan Bell at the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Office in Manhattan. And again, they only have what, guidelines, guidelines that can only be implemented if a wind company asks for them. In the same letter from the KDWPT, I learned, and I quote, "The proposed footprint of the project is estimated at 41,291 acres," end quote. In an article published by Fort Scott Biz on 2/30/19, it states Apex is, quote, "Looking to use 28,000 acres of land," end quote. At the September 1st County Commission meeting, an Apex representative stated that they want to add approximately 1,600 acres to the already over 20,000 acres, end quote. So the total acreage is closer to 43,000 acres. This map, the one I gave you, is from documents sent to me from KDWPT, shows the current footprint minus the newly leased 1,600 acres. Please take note of where the transmission lines are. The light gray area is the total assessment area, some of which encompasses Bourbon State Lake. Apex has already leased more land in the gray area, and I know that more leases are coming. It only makes sense that Apex will want to expand along the transmission lines. But does that qualify as a new project or just an extension of the current one? In a letter from the Secretary of State, which included several records, one is a Profit Corporation Annual Report from Apex Clean Energy. Line 12 asks, "Does this corporation own or lease land in Kansas suitable for use in agriculture?" End quote. The answer is no. First of all, you know that all that land is agriculture. Secondly, you could argue that Apex Clean Energy doesn't own the land. However, on the back of every one of the agreements, it is signed by Ken Young, COO and authorized signatory of Apex in its capacity as manager of Apex, the sole member of Apex, the sole member of Jayhawk Wind. At the County Commission meeting on August 25th, an Apex representative stated more than once, quote, "That the scope of the project hasn't changed," end quote. The representative also said, quote, "It is still 195-megawatt wind farm," end quote. In both the road use and maintenance agreement and the development agreement, it is written, quote, "Total size of approximately 146 megawatts," end quote. Using the 195-megawatt figure, and if the turbines they use will be 2.5 to 3 megawatts in range, that comes to 65 to 78 turbines. Using the 146-megawatt figure, it comes to 47 to 58 turbines. In the economic impact analysis of the Jayhawk Wind Energy Project, page four, it states that the project is expected to consist of 64 turbines. An article on the four-state homepage on October 30th, 2019, it states, "The company hopes to have all 50 turbines," and it went on to say, "in place by certain date." On the FAA website page, this is, this is the FAA one. Most recently, there has been inputted into their proposed, there are 118 proposed turbines listed on the FAA website. And then the other map that I gave to Jeff, because it used a lot of ink.
And I passed it around.
Okay. It's from KDOT, which shows the proposed placement of the turbines. All of those aren't marked because you can easily tell that they just don't have space to adequately get all those descriptions in there. So this all goes back to two weeks ago. So why was Apex in town asking for an amendment to the road use agreement from one mile of road? They told us it's so those landowners can participate. The road use agreement states on page four, section three, letter A, "The county hereby grants to developer and its representatives a non-exclusive road right-of-way to enter upon and utilize any road within the county." And I'm going to skip that next part. You can read it if those answers don't come publicly in some sort of form. I will be back to ask those. So this weekend, I also learned that a representative from Apex spoke at the Union Town Ruetan in recent weeks. And I just have to ask why? Why was he there? Why were they there? And as a commission, I ask you again, or I'd say, state again, that it didn't feel like you fought well enough for the best interests of Bourbon County residents. So I ask you to start fighting now to either curb their expansion or halt it altogether in further reaches of Bourbon County. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ann.
Any questions?
Nope, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
So where is Laura Holbridge? What's that?
Said to call when you're ready.
We're ready. She's hard to hear behind that door.
So the map that you had, you called attention to a, do you still have that?
I do.
A transmission line. Is that existing or proposed?
The ones that are on there, the blue and the red transmission lines are existing.
I would suggest that the email that I sent you, that I didn't send you, but Kendall sent you, that you may want to go have it too.
This one, Jeff, those are existing.
Yes, okay.
The red and the blue.
Did you get that email also?
I did.
From Kendall?
Yes.
On what, that Apex had called and invited the commissioners or anyone to go to their office and draw?
Oh, yes, yeah.
I'd suggest you go take that tour and clarify a lot of the questions. What's that?
Clarify what questions?
Oh.
Diane, I would say that...
The preliminary data.
That the 195 megawatts for the field, and then sometimes they use different numbers like 150, it's my understanding that that's the portion of the field that is going to be in Bourbon County. We know there's a portion of it that's going to be in Crawford County. It's probably the balance between 150 and 195. The sit, siding map that you shared, it does show some that are closer to, on the other side of Hyattville, this side of Hyattville?
Yes.
Which, which, they suggested that they're, they cannot build within three miles from that body of water. So the way I understand the process is, two or three years ago, they submitted a list of potential locations. And at that time, I was thinking that there was 88 specific locations that were identified on this postcard that we got from the FAA during that process. And so each of those was tagged with the X-Y coordinate. And this would have been a year, city?
Yes, on the green.
A year ago in October or September.
Yes, on the, on the green, the green map that I handed you, with the little dots and the, yeah. And, and yes, that's, you can see on there that those were placed there in 2000... And yes, that's, you can see on there that those were placed there in two thousand and eighteen. And I do understand that over the course of time, they do move and change and all of that. But it still is, to me, it's just the inconsistencies of telling us one thing and then the thing, the animal keeps growing. And so you need to be aware that this isn't going away, that somehow there's gotta be a way to, in my opinion and in the opinions of others, to curb this or to hold their feet to the fire when they say something. When they put a figure out there, how close is close enough when you're guessing and assuming or whatever? I mean, you asked several weeks ago, when the representative was here, about the acreage, just as an example, and you just threw out a figure. And we do that all the time, and I don't have a problem with, you know, that so much, until they're over twenty thousand acres wrong. And it just is frustrating to continue to hear that, to continue to hear the inconsistencies. And okay, so what is it? Is it a hundred and forty-six megawatt project? Is it a hundred and ninety-five megawatt project? Is it, you know, fifty turbines? Is it sixty-eight? Is it a hundred and eighteen that are now listed on the FAA website?
So from what I believe is that the portion of the generating capacity in Bourbon County is this a hundred and fifty-some number, and forty-some others would be in Crawford County. Is how I, in my mind, have seen this Jayhawk Wind LLC. It's a field that is majority of, seventy-five percent of it's in Bourbon County. Maybe eighty percent of it's in Bourbon County.
Yes, understand. So anyway, well, and just the gray portion that's left on that one map in Bourbon County. You know, the question also was asked, I believe, Jeff, you asked, is this a new project or is this just a continuation? Well, if it's a new project, I'd come back and I understood them to say, I mean, that new deals would be had and all of that. You know, there would be a whole another set of things to sign and hash out and go over. But can they just continue to extend their boundary at as they lease ground? And then what is the county gonna get in retribution? Not retribution, that's the wrong word. In, you know, compensation for that?
For the project creep.
Right, because you've had a set of figures based on the original boundary. And now they've already asked for more ground. And it looks to me like it's, if they've already assessed the light gray area on the one map, how easy is it, or when are they gonna want to continue to expand? And when it comes to the figures that we have now, it seems to me that those ought to grow, even if it's just a little bit in compensation.
I would agree.
For our county, so.
I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was with the chairman. So the only thing I wanted is that, here a few weeks ago, talking about the back parking lot. And we said that we were gonna try to figure out something to do with the back parking lot with the way it is, everybody's hitting their front end of the cars. I guess, is Justin here? Did you say that something that city?
Jim informed me that this Chad is hopefully gonna be coming in and temporarily fixing the problem with patchwork. We know there's a water leak that is gonna need to be fixed for a long-term fix, but at this point temporarily, they're going to go ahead and patch that up next week, allegedly. Kim, Harris informed me of that.
So I didn't know that when I made this appointment.
So the water is still a problem?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is that? Is that?
I'm assuming it's a water line.
Is it a spring or a?
Well, I've heard.
It's a water line that's been there.
It's been going on for, allegedly, for fifteen years.
That's what I've heard, too. You know, there's kind of a, I don't know.
There's a fountain free.
So we talked about putting something there so it'd go under.
I keep hearing two different stories. One that, you know, that there's a water leak and.
But going in.
And the other one I hear is that it comes from the courthouse. So we don't really have a definition or definite answer.
Yeah, because when I go out, I mean, I hit bottom. And there's only one spot that a lot of people can go in and out of. And before long, that's gonna be nonexistent, so.
Oh, well, we'll check on it, see what, see where we're at and when it can be fixed.
Okay. Justin, did you want to talk about the other one?
We had a message to the chairman about the easement that we had with regards to a property that a customer contacted us about a month ago.
Yes.
Laura and I will be on the agenda next week to go into detail about what's kind of happened with it. We've got some, we got a problem.
Is that the one on sixty-five highway and Forty-Fifth Street?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, Laura and Shane, we've all been kind of working on it, trying to figure out a way. It's one of those hundred-year-old problems that this commission, the commission before, and the commission before didn't have really had any skin in the game. But now it's coming back to life, we gotta fix it.
Wonderful.
It could be complicated. And I just want to let you guys know, too, we got the Omni EMS billing, and it went back up again for the month of September.
Did it go up more than what we normally?
Yeah, the total billing was eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-seven cents.
So about twenty thousand dollars more?
Yeah, but last month, we were twenty-some behind. So it's just a matter of, I think we're still cycling through some of those, people that are working from home with COVID. But the budget is still kind of all over the place, so we'll keep working on it.
Eighty-eight, that's about what we pay for the service, right?
Yes, that's right. But we're, the subsidy, that's not including, and we've always subsidized every year that system for thirty-six thousand a month. So our break even is sixty-eight thousand a month in billing.
So we're further close.
We're, it's gonna be, it won't, I mean, I think we're still gonna be short, but it's not gonna be by a whole lot. We do have some carryover. We need to order an ambulance because the road time is becoming, there's a lot of transport happening.
Have you think you heard whether or not they have a timeline on getting that ordered?
We're probably gonna order that in October.
October?
It takes six to eight months, so it's here in the summer when things are allegedly picked up. And then we also have an issue with training paramedics, they're hard to find. So there's some other counties that are doing some contracts with people, sending them to school. And then they work for the EMS program and not having to pay that money back. And so that's gonna be proposed soon.
That's a good way to.
I think that's a great anecdotal with Fort Scott Community College.
Yes. Allen County, Allen County already does that system.
Yeah.
Yeah, so does Vernon County.
And I think we can build resiliency if we get that opportunity for our volunteer firefighters to take advantage of parametric training and kind of become a career path.
Well, it's the hardest plan in the world, America. The other thing, too, Commissioner Fisher and Jody should be commended that we're moving along with the hospital hall concept. We have a couple other meetings lined up in the next, well, we have one Wednesday at two, and hopefully we'll have some more information. But we're coming, we're getting pretty close. I feel pretty confident based off the conversations that I have with Commissioner Fisher and with the Zoom meetings, that we could have some leases in place before the end of the year easily, if everything works out.
Very good.
No pressure on CDC or BAC Christie, just I think we can have things resolved prior to the new year starting. So just up my alley.
All right, thanks.
Thank you and welcome.
Anything else? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Mayor, second?
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Before we go, Justin, last week, Clifton was given permission by the commission to attend a Mottai County Health Department meeting over in.
I think all three of us were.
Iola. All three of us were?
Yes.
Are you going?
Well, I'm debating.
Possibility?
I'm leaning toward going.
So this meeting is at six-thirty. And the last time I went with Mark McCoy, he's not an elected official, but he has offered to take both of us.
Yes. It's really easy, as long as you go to and from the, you don't deviate from the closest path.
Okay.
You're able to ride in the same vehicle as long as, and you've already got permission to go. So you can't talk about county business, and you can't go like check out a quarry or go look at a stop sign or go look at a low water bridge. You have to stay on.
Health department business and to and?
To and from that facility.
Okay, I was just want.
Bourbon County commissioners in the past got caught when they went to a rock quarry and looked at a rock quarry.
So keep your eyes closed until Allen County?
Well, I don't, no, there's one, well, no, you should be driving by the rock quarries that are owned by the county.
And we promise we won't stop by their.
Yeah, just don't stop.
Land Hill.
You can't go down, you can't go see their quarry.
Yeah, no side, no side detours.
I don't care about that.
To make sure, right now it's clear, I actually would do a motion to allow that, just to make sure everyone's aware that you guys are gonna be riding in the same car. But you have every right to do that, as long as you don't deviate from the.
You want Mark McCoy to pick you up, Lynn?
No, not unless he wants to drive fourteen miles of gravel.
You want to meet at the end of the road?
Huh?
You want to meet at the end of the road?
I would imagine my car would be towed, it'd be in somebody's field.
So we need to make a motion for that? So I think we already did last week.
We did, you don't.
But I just wanted to make sure what the rules, you know, I didn't want to feel guilty if I rode in the same car and what the rules were. You know, I try to avoid the appearance of evil.
Yeah, no, it's, that's really good that you brought that up because you can ride together, you just can't.
And we've done that before.
Yes.
So good, cover our bases. Okay, motion on the table, adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Mr. Matt, I talked to you for.
Mic's off.
And mic's off?